Good evening. Thank you for being here. At this time, I'll reconvene the La Quinta City Council meeting of July 29, 2014. At this time, I'd ask that you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on the agenda is public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on an item which is on the agenda, I'd ask that you please fill out a request to speak form. It's a form like this. It's in the back of the room and give it to our city clerk. At this time, anybody wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda can do so. Seeing none, we'll move on to confirmation of agenda. Are there any changes, additions, or deletions by staff?
We have none.
By council members?
No.
Okay. All right. We have no announcements, nothing on the consent calendar. So we'll move on to our study session. We have one this evening, and that's a presentation of a survey results on city services and viability of local sales tax measures. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It looks like we have new microphones here. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Over the last two years, we've been engaged in a conversation with respect to city revenues and expenditures, and namely, how to ensure there's enough revenue to support the quality of life here in La Quinta. In response to the economic downturn, the city cut its expenses and reduced its workforce, and we're still recovering from the life without redevelopment. A couple of months ago, we took another look at revenue, and in particular, we took a look at all taxes available to the city. So on May 5, you directed us to come back to you with a further look at an add-on sales tax measure. And on May 20, we presented that information as well as a financial forecast about the city's financial needs. What that forecast showed is that while revenues are improving, they're not coming back at the levels that they once were, as well as our expenses are rising higher than our revenues. During that May 20 discussion, there was conversation with respect to looking to place a measure on the ballot in 2014 or 2016. And to that end, we, at your direction, commissioned a survey, and the survey team is here this evening, I'll present them shortly, where we will look at the viability of a sales tax measure. So what we're looking for from you tonight is, in order to place a measure on the ballot for the November election, it requires two-thirds majority, or four out of five council members, to vote in the affirmative for these resolutions. So this evening, we're also requesting a two-thirds majority of whether or not to proceed. If there is a two-thirds majority to proceed, we'll bring back an item to you for consideration at the next council meeting, where you would be looking at the actual documents to place it on the ballot. So with that said, I would like to introduce Adam Shonin Sheen with FM3 Research and Colleen Crowley with the Lou Edwards Group.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the opportunity to be here with you this evening. I'm Colleen Crowley with the Lou Edwards Group. Just by way of introduction, two-thirds of our firm's practice is comprised of working with local jurisdictions on revenue measures. We've enacted over $30 billion in California with a 95% success rate, and currently working with 17 local jurisdictions with sales tax new measures or reauthorization of existing measures. So we worked on this project for your city with our research partners FM3 Research, and I'll let Adam run through just some highlights of the numbers in a moment. We looked at public perceptions in the city of La Quinta on quality of life issues, city services, and customer satisfaction, including assessing a potential revenue measure and thoughts about that and the need for that. The survey was conducted consistent with our best practices for similar studies in local cities around here and throughout California. We worked closely with your city staff in developing the survey, and at staff's direction, we did have a look at both 2014 and 2016 scenarios. Consistent with our practices in other jurisdictions, two tax increment levels were tested. And the survey found, as you'll see in a moment, La Quinta residents really satisfied, really high numbers of satisfaction with your work and the work of the city staff and city services and overall quality of life. And as you'll also see in a moment, that presented a challenge also in them seeing a need for additional funding because things seem to be running so well. So I'll let Adam highlight some of those specifics for you.
Thank you, Colleen, and thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to go through some of the survey methodology as well as the results of your community survey. I'm happy to take questions at any point during the conversation. This was a public survey that we conducted between June 18 and the 29 with landlines and cell phones of a little over 300 of the residents of the city of La Quinta of those. Roughly 260 were folks that we would consider likely to vote in the November 2014 general election based on their past voting history. Since that's the kind of primary time that you need to make a decision about now, the data that you'll see here is based on that sample. And for that sample, all of the questions that we asked of that 260-person group, you have a margin of error of roughly 6.1%, plus or minus on each of those questions. Starting with the mood of the electorate and perceptions of La Quinta city government. Clearly, the residents of your city are very positive about the way that the city is functioning right now. Nearly eight in 10 of the voters in the city believe La Quinta is headed in the right direction, far above that of the Coachella Valley, more generally speaking, or Riverside County overall. Only 14% said the city was headed on the wrong track, and 8% were unsure. These are well above the numbers that we see in some of the other cities in this area, as well as Orange County and LA County that we think are comparable cities. So really, something to be proud of and that you can be commended for. More specifically, in terms of their opinions of the city government and of the city council, again, very strong favorability ratings. So we found that 80% of the respondents to this survey were either very or somewhat favorable to the way that the city government overall is functioning. The city council, also a very strong number, 73%. And I would say, again, higher than we see in most typical communities. So this is sort of a good news, bad news situation. So just over a half of the respondents in this survey thought the city has a need for additional funds. And we assume that this ties back to the sense that the city is moving in the right direction and that things are functioning well. Only 15% see a great need for funding compared to 28% who see no real need. And this presents a challenge as we ask your voters to increase local taxes. So let's delve into that question, exactly the reaction to a possible city revenue measure. We crafted a hypothetical ballot question based on our past experience and our understanding and working with your staff of what we thought would be something that would garner a lot of support. So we highlighted a lot of the public safety services that you're providing, as well as other services. We asked about a one-cent sales tax with several accountability provisions, including citizens oversight, annual audits, and ensuring that all the funds that are raised by this measure remain here in the city to benefit local residents. On that initial test, we do find that a majority do support the measure as we crafted it, 54% compared to 45%. The caveat here, as I told you earlier, your margin of error is plus or minus 6.1%. So you'll see that 54% is within six points of 50%. Okay? So there is a chance within our level of confidence of our survey that actually it's less than a majority that would support the measure. You will also note that definitely yes and definitely no numbers are equal. Those are your sort of high-intensity, most-committed voters, and that's a little bit of a warning sign that this is a kind of a 50-50 type issue. We do see that the voters who believe the city is moving in the right direction are much more supportive of the measure than those who think the city is off on the wrong track. Not too surprising. But you'll see that the levels don't exactly correspond. So the people who think the city is on the wrong track are a little more likely to oppose the measure than the people who say the city is on the right track are likely to support it. And we believe that ties into this need for funding question. What you see here is just that. This is the people who believe the city has a need for funding compared to their support for this local revenue measure. If you start on the left-hand side, you see those respondents who believe the city has a great need for funding overwhelmingly support this hypothetical measure that we tested. 82% say they support it, 16% oppose it. The problem is, for a November 2014 scenario, that makes up only 15% of the sample that we tested. Okay? Those people who say there's some need also support the measure very strongly, somewhat less than the folks who say there's a great need.
Can you go back to that, your statement on the 82% account?
Yeah. So 15% of the respondents to the survey said the city has a great need for funding. That's the blue in parentheses at the bottom there. I don't think I have a pointer on here, or I would, maybe I do? I'm afraid I'm going to turn it off. Okay. So, no, there we go. So that column here, where it says "great need," 82% support, 16% oppose. Okay?
So 82% of 15%.
Exactly. Exactly. That's exactly how to read it. So in the next column over, it's "some need." That's 38% of the people who answered that question about needs said "some need." Of those people, 62% would support, 37% are still opposed. If you combine those two, you get the next column over, "great or some need." You see two-thirds support, 31% oppose. When you look at the people who said there was little or no real need, that number flips almost exactly to 34% support, 65% oppose. You see this really direct relationship between assessment of the need for funding and interest in supporting the measure. We did test, as Chris mentioned, the difference between your November 2014 scenario and your November 2016 scenario. There is a slight increase in support, kind of just on the natural amongst that group of voters, but it's not an overwhelming number. And there would still be work to do to educate the community over the course of the next couple of years if this is something you want to go forward with at that time instead.
So how did you come to this 2016? How did you pick those figures?
Yeah. So that's based on past voting history. So this is, on the right-hand side, is actually all the people who were surveyed, 300. Everyone we surveyed, we would say, based on their past voting history, is likely to participate in the November 2016 election. So I should say it's based on who the voters are, not a prediction of what the future would hold. Okay?
So is that virtually the same as the voters for 2014?
Yeah, it is. That's what we found, which was, I would say, a little bit surprising. We expected to see a wider variation there. But the demographic differences in looking at past voting history wasn't as stark as we thought it might be. Okay. So 300 people in this survey, we consider them likely to vote in November 2016. Okay? Those are all the people that are on the right-hand side.
So that's an assumption on your part?
Yeah. Yeah, it's an assumption. All, I mean, who we consider likely to vote in November 2014 is an assumption too, right? It's based on what we expect based on past voting history. So those people, those 300, they come out at 56% yes, 42% no.
So the 300 in '14 are the same 300, no 2014. So we have consistent voters?
Well, you have, right, you have about 260 of the 300 from November 16 would be considered likely in November 14. Okay? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just don't think they're valuable information.
Yeah. It's not a, I want to be clear, it's not a prediction of November 2016, right? There's too many things that could happen between now and then. It's an assessment of where you start now with the voters who are likely to turn out in that election. We did test, as Colleen mentioned, both the one-cent and three-quarter cent measure. We find the slightly lower amount doesn't have any significant impact on support one way or another.
Okay, I need to add something here, if I may.
Please.
As I recall, our council didn't talk about the one cent, the three-quarters of the cent. We talked about one half. So if this is supposed to be a worst-case scenario, then it's a certain...
Yeah. So our assessment, and again, this is an assumption, as we mentioned earlier. When we don't see much of a difference, it's our sense that the dollar amount is not the key factor here, that it's the need for funding.
We didn't talk about half, though.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
The other thing is that I think would be very important for a survey like this, I think it would be important to the voter, the people that you're talking to here, know exactly, not exactly, but an estimate of what the dollar amount would be at half a cent revenue to the city. It's critical. It's a big number.
Yeah.
This doesn't mean anything to them as far as I'm concerned. What is one cent? I mean, what is that? How do they calculate whether that's a good bet or if there's nothing to base it on?
Right. So our sort of operating theory on this is that voters are making their decision on the impact to them so that the amount that they pay in sales tax is the more direct connection to them as opposed to the amount of money that the city would bring in at each of these different amounts. But that's something that, if you feel important, it could be. I don't have a way of saying it would be important or it would not be important. We also looked at the possibility of adding a sunset clause to the measure. So you notice it was not part of the summary that was tested. This was an add-on question to say, would this make you more likely or less likely? We found that somewhat more likely to support the measure, 49%, if there were a nine-year sunset.
And?
Yeah.
Do we go back to the sunset?
Absolutely.
Okay. This is a horrible thing to put in the minds of any voter. I'm very disgusted that this was on the survey. First of all, you can't condition or conjure councils to do something and say that in nine years, you know, this is going to go away. And what's the point in doing it if you're going to take it away in nine years when expenses are even higher? This is not something that should be put in the minds of a voter.
Okay. Sure. I totally respect that. I think we find that...
Did you come up with this idea on your own?
To be honest, I don't remember.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah.
Like, it's a horrible thing to ask.
I don't remember, to be honest. I just don't. It's something that we would test in a community where we think maybe you'll be kind of at this marginal level, close to the majority, and maybe an additional accountability element may kind of bump support up a little bit. But in this case, it didn't really have that impact. Oops.
Christie, I asked the question of why nine years, if it coincided with our 2023 bonds, or, you know, what the relevance of nine? I mean, Cathedral City is coming up on a renewal. So they have sunsets, and then they have to be revoted on to continue.
Right.
And that's a lot of what these cities are faced with throughout. And I think the response was that nine years is the average of these measures that cities have utilized.
Yeah. There's not a real exact science to how long the sunset clause should be. You're trying to find something that's not too short and not too long. If it's 20 years, people say, well, that doesn't mean anything.
But that's certainly a discussion that we need to have up here, and I, for one, would not even support a sunset clause.
Yeah. So that's a policy question for you guys to discuss, if that's something that you think is appropriate or not.
And if I could, in your other samples that you, or other surveys you have done, and other tax measures that have been successful of this type, have most of them had sunset clauses?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Council. Just to note, in some jurisdictions, they do want to test the sunset because they find that the voters in those particular areas, in every area, is different. But we have found in many of our jurisdictions, voters want that control. So they do want you to come back. They take a comfort in knowing. I'm proving this right now because you've made your case for funding, and we'll see in nine years. And the reason nine, there is no science to it. Sometimes in a more conservative jurisdiction, they might be, want to see a shorter number. You know, we just did a 20-year, different kind of revenue measure in a city with a track record of easily approving such things. So every area is a little different. So the nine, to me, says it's the highest you get without getting into double digits, and it sounds larger. But it is a complete policy question, obviously, for the council.
One of the things we found on the sunset clause, and I think this speaks to kind of the favorability of the council and city government overall. It was not a real significant motivator of support. Found mostly it was a way to solidify support amongst the people that were already kind of on the side of voting for the measure to begin with. So we also tested the impact of some information. What do people, if we tell people a little bit more, what do they know, first of all? And how does that information change their opinion? So first of all, this is a look at some of the city services that we asked about to see which ones voters prioritize the highest. We did find that public safety, far and away, no matter how we talk about it, was the number-one priority. I'm not going to go through all these. I think that's, I don't want to take your time with that. But there was others that were not seen as low importance, but just less so than public safety. So some of the other programs and services you see there. On the top of this slide, I think the one thing I want to point out here, the ideas of independent annual financial audits, and I guess it's a little bit lower down, ensuring citizens oversight of funds, those accountability items, again, not as strong here as we see in some other communities, which, again, I think speaks to kind of the work that you all are doing. We did test some messages that we could see. Is there education we can provide that would increase support for the measure? We asked about some quality of life issues. We referenced the takeaways of local funds from the state government. We highlighted that this would be a way for La Quinta to have its own dedicated revenue that could only be used to solve, address local problems. We also referenced the increasing costs in your sheriff's department contract and what that means, the implications of that, and what the sales tax is in La Quinta, how it's collected, and how much of that comes from residents outside of your city, and why that might be important. So we find after that, as well as some potential opposition messages that we think may arise, support for the measure ends up at this basically 50-50. 50 to 49 with 1% undecided. So virtually, everybody has an opinion, and those opinions are almost perfectly evenly split. One thing I, again, want to remind you, we did have a margin of error of about 6% here. So that 50%, by our statistical modeling, could be 56, it could be 44, but we think it's within that range. So that's kind of where you end up after this. More information that kind of replicates what we think people will say about the measure between now and November 2014. The three-quarters of a cent measure actually does worse than the one-cent measure in the final time we asked this question, that's on the right-hand side. So the three-quarters of a cent started at 53% and ends at 48%, actually a point behind.
So your constituents are definitely happy with the services, and that presents that challenge of them not necessarily immediately recognizing the need for funding. So our firm's practice is not to recommend a city proceed unless they're above that margin of error. So that wouldn't be the case here, that we would recommend that for you. Depending upon the council's wishes, it may be that you would want to, you know, if you did proceed, focus in on that recognition of need and just talk to your residents a little bit about that if you were going to embark on such a measure because you saw the strong connection of those who did see the need, even though they weren't making up a bulk of those who took the survey, tended to really support. They already have confidence in your governance, so those two may work well together. So thank you.
Question?
Yes.
If I could.
Sure.
Back to the aspect of a sunset clause. Where did you see that in past surveys and past successful initiatives?
City of...
I mean, more successful with the clause, less successful with the clause?
I think, I mean, you obviously all know your own area. In your case here, very often, people want to see that voters, there's kind of a dis, maybe borderline distrust, or voters wanting control of that, being happy with the idea, things like citizens oversight are very popular, coming back and asking for continuation if it's necessary. Here, it did shore up the people that were already thinking about supporting this measure. It didn't get much additional support, did it? So it didn't really buy too much more support, maybe a couple of points. The overall, I think people, a couple of points increased a little bit by hearing all of the positive messages. And then you see when they hear some of the downsides, they went down quite a bit, too. But yeah, in many jurisdictions, they really want to see that it's going to end at a particular date.
So then, in, I guess, your past practices, if you see, if we were to move forward with this information and it failed in November 2014, statistically, what's the likelihood that we could get it passed? And/or how many attempts would it take come 2016, or 18, or 20, if the voters thought, we can just vote no, and we won't have the sales tax increase without that understanding?
Right. It's our perspective that you kind of go to the voters in a judicious manner if you're going to ask them for something. So, you know, we'll find certain other scenarios where people can do something now and go back in six months if they fail in a different situation. We don't, we tend to just say, if you're going to, if you feel you can be successful, go ahead and go, you know, while you've got that. But we don't, if they feel they're not so sure, or they feel they might fail, but then they'll just go again. We don't tend to, it does eat away a little bit at the credibility. You know, you've got tremendous amount of goodwill. But you could, you could do it. And I can't speak to the success odds of that.
As Colleen mentioned, just to add to that point, I think that different jurisdictions are in different places, and it's really hard to say, this place failed in this year, and then they came back, so therefore, we can do that. Or this place failed this time. There's places that, jurisdictions that fail multiple times. I do think you run the risk, as Colleen said, of kind of dinging a little bit of the goodwill and credibility that you built up. And you create another argument against the measure next time, which is, well, we already said no. Why are you asking again? So I do think you want to be cautious about when you go to the voters. I think in this case, being kind of within the margin of error of whether this could pass or not, we would say it's a little bit of a risky proposition in that sense.
Well, given your suggestions, if you will, or even your recommendation, which I don't believe in, frankly, and we'll talk about Rancho Cordova in a minute, I think that our community expressed the confidence that they have in us because the proof is in the pudding. It's where they live, it's their comfort here, their lifestyle that's here. What they don't, what dots they haven't been able to connect yet because it hasn't become apparent to them is this new world that we live in with the elimination of redevelopment agencies plus the terrible recession that we've just gone through, I think gone through. And I say that because what I have here, and I think if the people sitting out there in the audience and the community had the opportunity to see this, that you might find that the answers were a lot different, and which is why I don't like surveys. But this is a 10-year comparison from 2004 to 2013. And '27 was our peak year. That was probably everybody's peak year. And I can tell you, from 2007 to 2013, what rose was property tax. And that was because of the elimination of the redevelopment agency. And it went from $5 million to $7 million. So it was an increase of $2 million. Sales tax is down $1 million. Now, part of that is, and will always be, and will progressively worse, is internet sales. And I don't know whether or not we can ever solve that problem in the state of California after having been on a committee for the last six years trying to get some kind of direction on it. And it's just getting worse and not better. So, sales tax is an interesting figure as we go into our future. TOT for the city of La Quinta has only shifted from $5.5 million to $5.9 million because of the vacation rentals that we picked up. We're never going to have a shift in that until we have more beds. We're not going to have beds for at least three years, at least, if we started with shovel in the ground tomorrow. So, we're not going to see a big change in TOT. And investment income, in 2007, we had $11 million. That was basically interest income on our money. We're now at $1,600,000. We have a deficit between those two comparison years of $8,500,000. Now, I don't know that the city out there actually understands that because you folks didn't tell them, and you weren't supposed to tell them. But this is the end of July, and we have August, September, and October to inform them. That's, we now know what message we have to give them. We have, as of January 1st, we're going to have to start paying prevailing wages to all of our contract people. That's an expense that this city hasn't had, or any city was mandated by the state of California to have. This is another present from Sacramento that we're getting. We also have a $10 million fence to build that, I know everybody keeps saying, it doesn't have to be all our money. Well, we'll wait and see whose money that's going to come from to protect the sheep. There's all kinds of things. This is a new world. I think you folks are in a very, very dangerous position right now because this is a new world going forward. Your surveys from today on are not going to be comparable to what the way they were yesterday because it was a different world. It was a different financing structure that was out there. That's, it's all going to change. And I think that we happen to have a community that has the proper sense up here to understand that it is new, it is different. These are, what I read to you is our revenue stream. We can't control that. We can't change it. It is what it is. We just have to learn how to live within that. But it gets awful hard with the revenue stream going down and expenses continuing to go up, again, only out of a natural course, not because anybody's overspending. So, it's really interesting, and I really think that we would be making a terrible mistake if we waited until 2016, it would be 2017 before you would even have a sense of revenue. And that's three years out. Yes, we have a wonderful reserve account. I think we'd make the biggest mistake ever by going into that reserve account to make sure we get through the next couple of years. Once that's gone, it's gone. You don't, you don't, you don't get back what you spent. You start building a new one, but you never get back what you spent. And people in this community, they all know what a reserve account is personally because they live with that kind of a financial understanding. So, I, you know, I just, I think we have the tools, we have the information, we just haven't had the time to get out there with it, but we have plenty of time to do that. And I, Rancho Cordova came into my conversation because I know Dave Sanders very well up there, and just saw recently that they are going to go out for a tax. Now, that's a younger city than we are, very wealthy city. And when I saw that they were going out for a sales tax increase, I thought, what is going on here? Because I know that they probably are even in better shape than we are in. And unfortunately, I didn't find out until today, so I didn't have enough time to get ahold of Dave Sanders to find out what their story is. But they are going to go out for one. Apparently, they've been working with your company, and there was a 17% change. And so, they started working in April. And I don't know what kind of an educational program they put on, but I think that we could do the same thing between now and November. I really think we could be successful. And I think that you're buying into a lot of problems by not going for it now.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
Frank, what is it going to cost the city if we put this on the ballot?
That's a good question.
Sorry to throw it at you, but it's a question that...
I would look at Susan, just to, the general election is about $50,000?
But that's already being taxed.
Right.
Yeah, there would be an added cost to put a measure on the ballot.
Sure.
I believe it'd be, you know, I did get a number about a year ago, and I'm not sure, I think it was $5,000 or $10,000, but I could be wrong. I'll check that number and get it to you.
You know, if you're going to spend $50,000, are you saying, is it going to be worth it? But if we're spending $5,000, $10,000 to put this on the ballot, to run with it, is it worth the gamble? Sure.
Well, I just, I just think that this is the message.
Sure, absolutely.
This is the message.
And that's not the only message in that.
No.
It's interesting because a month ago, I went to our city manager, and I wanted to know, when you look at your tax bill, when you pay your property tax bill, what do you see on the tax bill that comes back and is enforced by the city? And we have two issues, and one is lighting and landscape district, and then we have one, I believe it's flood control, $9 or something like that. But the interesting thing is, I said, what are the other cities in the Coachella Valley? What do they pay on these issues that goes right back, that is enforced by the cities that have to come back to them? Just briefly, I think the audience would be interested. And at the city of La Quinta, we pay once a year on your tax bill, $45.58. That's your, not what goes to the county, and not what goes to other entities, but what really comes forced back to the city of La Quinta. The second closest to us is Palm Desert, and they're $88. Then you go up to Palm Springs, which is $168. Then you're going to go up to Indio, which is $384. Then you're going to go up to Ranch Mirage, which is $560. Then Cathedral City, $1,121. And then Indian Wells, $2,078. That they pay on their tax bill that goes right back to the city, and that's enforced by the city. I mean, we're only, what, $45? So, you know, it's a good point that, you know, we are not taxing our citizens. Nobody likes to have taxes. But taxes pay for what we need here in our city. And it pays for our police, it pays for infrastructure, pays for what we live here for. And that's the only way you're going to get by is through taxation. And we're looking at, down the road, into a deficit. And as Terry said, we don't want to dig into our reserves. We just got into our reserves for $42 million that we had to give to the state of California, and then, and it dropped our reserves down substantially. Now, we're in the position that we want to start building up our reserves. Reserves is like your bank account and your savings account. That's what we want. We want to be able to protect the city in the future for things that might happen, catastrophes and things like that. And if you don't have a reserve, where do you go? We see cities in the valley that are going through very tough times because they have no reserves. So, it's important that we deal with these issues now, and I'm with Terry, I'm saying, we've got to look to the future as to what we need and what we're going to have to do. And half cent, you don't even see it on your bill when you go in and buy goods and services. And this isn't for food and the necessities of life, these are these special things. And the vast majority of the money comes from outsiders, doesn't come from our citizens. Comes from our guests. Hey, we're a destination resort. That's our business. There's tourism in that. So, I think we've procrastinated over this for so many years. We didn't want to put taxes in, especially these last few years when we've dealt with the economy being in the toilet, in that. We want to be able to say to our citizens, now is the time that we need to step up to the plate because we're going to need it in the future unless things change, which we can't anticipate. We just have to look and do the best we can, and with staff's help, and that, trying to look into the future as to what is going to happen. The best we can do is say, let's move forward on an issue of the half cent and that, and put it to the voters. Let the voters make the decision. It'll be their decision to make.
With that?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're all in agreement here that the sales tax is needed for our city and our future stability, but my concern is a timing standpoint. I think we need time to educate the public. As the survey has shown, we need a time to really bring all the public in on this decision, and not just make it from the five of us here, but make it from the voting public in the city of La Quinta. And we need time to help them understand why we need to do this now versus not at all. And some will see our reserves and say, well, obviously, you don't need more income, not understanding why we have the reserves that we do. But I think we need more time to bring this to the public, to educate them on where we're at, the cost of public services and police services, and the growth that we'll have in the future. So, again, I think we all agree, but my concern is to give us time to do a proper education program and bring the entire public involved in this process. And I don't think we can do it within three months. We're going to need much more time to bring the city involved in this, to get the proper support that we need. I don't want to give it a half shot now only to do it again in two years. When we're going to do this, let's do it right, and let's bring the whole city of public in, and not try to do it on a quick, I don't want to say dirty, but not give it the time that it deserves.
Okay, well, I have several things to say, but with respect to the survey, I was not in favor of the survey because I think numbers, you can kind of play with them and do whatever you want. However, I will say that out of the survey came some very valuable information for us to use. So, I think from that standpoint, it was definitely worth it. We're elected here to make easy and hard decisions. This is a tough decision, but it's a decision that we have to make. It's, we've got to stop kicking the can down the road. And the message that we're going to give, I disagree with you, Lee, but the message we're going to give has to be short, it has to be sweet. We can't go out and educate the public on every single thing that we're spending the money on, because they really don't want to hear it. So, the, this is great. It's a great message. Another message is public safety showed up in the survey as their number one concern. Those costs are going to continue to accelerate, and over the next two years. We have to look at calpers, which I think it's at 14% now, or something? It's going up to 22%?
Yes.
So, we have an intelligent public. We're not asking for a parcel tax, we're asking for one-half of 1% increase in sales tax. And again, we've talked about this so much, they're, in the course of three months, we can get the public involved. I know we can. And we can educate them and explain to them why we need this. We need this to keep the city as it is, to keep all the services that we currently have. If we don't get any revenue, additional revenue, then we're going to be looking at a deficit. And that isn't why we're here. That's not what we were elected to do. So, no, I mean, the T-word is horrible. Nobody wants to be taxed, but a half of 1% sales tax increase still puts us way on the low end in the valley. So, I don't see any reason to procrastinate on this. And anytime that you are attempting to educate the public, you can't do it over a two-year period because by the time they get ready to go to the polls, it's not, it hasn't impressed them. That's the way I feel about it. I think, you know, a hard-fought campaign right now is what we need to do. So, if we did, excuse me, if we did put this on the ballot and it passed, what would be our anticipated revenue per year? At half a cent? Half a cent or so?
At half a cent, it's three and a half million dollars.
A year?
Yes.
Okay. So, I ask anyone on council who is not for doing this right now, are you willing to gamble like seven or eight million dollars based on the fact that it may or may not pass? I'm not.
Actually, I bet it would be nine because you're not going to...
Probably, you don't get it for another...
Yeah. It'll be, it would be 2017 before any revenue.
So, let's ask ourselves, what do we have to lose by putting it on the ballot now? A tiny bit of credibility, that's what they said, and that is it. And if it, if it doesn't go, if it doesn't pass this time, but I'm quite sure that it will...
I am, too.
If you look at, again, numbers from the survey, the reason that they are kind of recommending that we not do it is because of plus or minus 6%. Every single number in this survey was yes, over 50%, 50% or over yes. That's all we need. And so, I don't, I just feel really, really strongly that we cannot afford to gamble a possible revenue of that amount based on, well, we have to, we might lose a little credibility. That just doesn't fly with me. Okay? I know, I'm strong about that, but it just, it's something we have to stop procrastinating on and get it done.
I have a couple of questions on the education process. Should we say yes tonight? When then, what happens in our role and our ability to campaign this process versus it being a community effort? What does the law state in terms of our ability to push this forward?
Yes. Council members, there is a seminal case, Stanton v. Ma, that addresses this exact issue. When a measure is going to be put on the ballot, there is the limited, or more limited ability for a council to provide information, education, but not actively campaign on behalf of the measure. That would no longer be allowed.
Was strictly educational.
Correct.
So, does that mean the city can create educational pieces and messages and blast, mail, send? Can we spend money on that? Or no?
Just to educate what the measure is about, what it says, and what its ramifications would be is okay.
Versus vote yes, vote no?
Well, that's where you cross the line. If you actually are then saying, so vote yes or vote no, that cannot be done. If that makes sense.
Vote yes?
Yes.
And educate is obviously vote yes without saying it.
Well, I think educate is explaining our need for...
Yeah.
I mean, I love some of the things that came out of the survey, that we're doing a great job. I mean, that's just, that's wonderful, that our public has that kind of confidence in us. But they're going to have, our public is smart. We have a smart group of people that live here. And I fully believe that if we can get this on the ballot, we can get the community behind us. Got some really strong community leaders that I could name right now that are for this, that have been pushing for it for years. And we don't, there's, what I see from the numbers that, and Terry actually requested this report, but we don't, we have a steady revenue stream over the past, from 2011 through 13, and that's not good because we have expenses that are increasing and our revenue isn't. We have to find a source of revenue. And we've talked about this up here quite a bit, and there's nothing else on the horizon. So, anyway, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
Are you done? No. I wanted to ask that question first before a few questions and or comments. You know, in the document, Terry, we're never going to see 2007 again, I think that's...
Oh, absolutely.
The American way, and we all know that. And when you look at property sales and TOT, we're actually...
And when you look at property sales and TOT, we're actually ahead 1.4 million from 2007. It's the investment income, and that was based on repayments that we made and state funds that we made that.
It was based, based mostly on interest.
Right.
Money that, yeah.
That we were getting because we had money that we gave to the state that we therefore couldn't gain interest on. So, that, that was in a choice situation. Correct, correct. So, you know, on the, on the, on the things that drive us, property sales and TOT, it's still ahead 1.4, but you're right, the investment income is, is relevant. Number one, I want to thank each of the council members and the mayor for supporting the survey process with a 5-0 vote to get us to this discussion because I think that, like Christie said, it provided valuable information. And I also want to thank the residents for taking the time to do the survey. This was 300 people and it was about a 20-minute survey. So, kudos to those residents who have a vested interest in our community that wanted to provide their feelings strongly in either direction towards their perceptions of the city of La Quinta. And, you know, recognizing our ability to manage the city effectively despite the challenges we've been facing with the state, there's still an overwhelming confidence that we have the ability to do our job. And we're balancing a budget and we've cleaned up our expenses. We continue to look for opportunities for both revenue and expense management. And, and I think that that just is the proudest moment when you're elected to do a job and people say you're doing a good one and, and an overwhelming statistic compared to other surveys. So, you know, woo-hoo for us. Knowing that we have some limitations on our ability to campaign and/or persuade per se versus educate, because that was the whole point, is the education. Look how long it took us to continue to educate this community on how great the city is, how well off we are, how strong our reserves are, how we're managing our, our funds and our process. They got that message because they're saying it right back to us. This is what the results have shown, is that they know we're getting it done, which isn't a compelling argument with these statistics to think that it's going to go forward. We're not desperate enough for it to be overwhelmingly convincing that it will pass. I, I mean, I can't support knowing that we've got, you know, potentially Silver Rock coming in front of us, you know, potential repayments from the loan, give or take, not knowing if that's going to happen, but we've got development that's happening and it will, it will result in revenues. And yes, we have expenses and yes, we need to manage them. And I was a little surprised at the 2016, but if they're looking at that with the state of mind that they have today, that state of mind of happiness and satisfaction, then that's where the work has to begin. And it can't happen between now and November. There is no way to get that done between now and November. We have got to make a concerted effort, have a true education platform and outline all of the steps necessary to make this happen. Look what happened with lighting and landscaping. It didn't roll out exactly as we had planned. It was, it was rebellious, it was overwhelmingly no, and now we're coming back and asking the entire city to pick something up. Yes, we have future expenses. Yes, we have a future need for additional revenue. Yes, I support this going forward, but I really, I agree with Lee. We really need to take the time and properly educate the community. I cannot support a tax with the fact that the city thinks we're doing our job and we're going to be able to continue to do the job.
That's part of doing our real job, making hard decisions.
And my hard decision is, is let's start educating now and take the time that we need to change the stats so people recognize what Terry's piece of paper says, what PERS costs are going to be, you know, what, what prevailing wage means to anybody who wants to do business here and what it means to our city services. They don't get that right now. All they get is, you're getting it done and I don't want to have to pay more. I'm happy here. So, I cannot support this going forward for this 2014, no way. It's a gamble that.
Huge.
It, it, it's, I don't think this is worth taking. You don't want a no vote and not be able to go back to them again.
You can go back to them again.
But we want to have some credibility.
Absolutely. The credibility is worth it to me.
And, and, you know, we need to learn from past years when we tried to do this with the paramedics, we brought that vote up twice and we lost both times, whether it be from five votes or 50 votes, we still lost those both times. And that was only, what, $70 a year we were asking for.
But that took two-thirds vote. It's not a simple majority.
We've got to have a better education program, and that's, that's my number one.
I don't argue the education, be able to get to them. And you've got a point in regards to, can we do this in a couple of months? You're saying, no, we can't, so.
Well, one of, one of the things that we see in development and when we have public hearings, we're always hearing from our seasonal residents that we're trying to push things through in the summertime when they're not here. And so, you know, what opportunity is that to really get out to a lot of the communities, a lot of the voters that are taking holiday or time off or they're elsewhere, that we are doing this during the summer months? Again, I'm convinced that the residents feel the same way I do based on the responses from the survey, and I will stick with them and work towards.
The answers are 10%.
What's that?
The yeses are all over 10% on this survey.
And, and you know what? It's so close, it's, it's, look at the satisfaction level and look at where they're willing to spend the money. They want public safety, which is going to cost us more, but it doesn't look like they're willing to give that up. And, and things like managing stake takes and, those don't manage them, streets and roads, that, they don't see an investment in CIP as important. We do, and, and they're relying on us to, to find that money and, and make it happen because we've been able to do so. So, I vote no.
We've been, we've been able to do so because the tools in our box were so much more than they are now.
I understand.
You know, Sacramento can, can do hardly any more damage to cities, but I have, I have a feeling that they'll find more things to do.
Way to do it.
And, and, you know, when, when you finally break down and you go to this, to the community and ask them to support this kind of an action, you might find that they just shut you down completely, you know? I, I, I think this is the time to do it. Every city in the state of California is considering some kind of action.
Tax increase.
Because they don't know what's going to be taken away from us as far as what we're going to be able to improve going into the future. It's, it's a scary time and to take the, the chance that you're going to have potentially three years before you're going to see any revenue if you wait until 2016. It'll be, it'll be the end of 2017 before you see any revenue, and you're going to have.
It's a minimal ask for a lot, a lot of revenue security for our city, to keep our city going. It's a minimal ask for the citizens.
Not if it doesn't pass. And, and from an optimistic standpoint, which I am, why don't we utilize this as part of our education to optimize the fact that we're one of the only cities in the valley that's not asking for more and market that, that we are the 8% city and continue to work on what those increased expenses are going to look like down the road and, and do what we can to attract those businesses that we need that can produce more sales tax revenue for us and start working on the economic development piece as we continue to, to try to meet the gaps and the shortfalls that are in the years to come. And that way, we're doing both. We're growing the economy, we're promoting that piece, we're attracting new businesses. People might choose to shop in La Quinta over someplace else because it costs them less. It, it's more viable for retention of businesses here in our city from the local, the local merchants.
I have not heard anything from a local merchant that is opposed to this. In fact, I, I haven't talked to any person that was opposed to it, not one, not one single person just looked at me and said, Terry, you're nuts. And, and I, I've had that said to me many times in the past, Terry, you're nuts.
You didn't talk to half of the people that were called. There's 150 people.
I have, I have talked to people that said, no, I have talked to people that said, if you do this, others will shop elsewhere. People will shop elsewhere if they can save them the money. That's what they said, believe it or not. That's what they said.
As you said, they're uneducated as to what it's all about and what it amounts to.
But it's only going to take three, two, three years to educate them.
No, I agree.
Well, and you know, we can't do it, we couldn't do anything until after, it'd have to start next year anyway, you've, you've, you know. And there's going to be a whole telling, I think, a, a change of the tides based on who's coming forward nationally in 2016 with candidates and what the state of the economy is from a nation's standpoint. That's really going to determine how our messaging looks as well because I think people overall think things are bleak from a state and a national standpoint. You definitely have expressed that multiple times and.
Darn right.
And, and you don't start tomorrow on a 2016 campaign. No, there's, it's a very orchestrated process. Lou and Evers presented it when the league meetings a couple of years ago, and it does take time, but it, it's an organized process to get to as many residents as possible. That, if we were to do this again, it would be drastically different because unless you're in the 60s or 70s, that's no way.
So, if we did another survey in 2016 and we were still in the 50s, you wouldn't go forward with a, a sales tax increase?
It depends on what our financial situation is in that point in time and, and what we've done and what we know is to come. Because again, if, if they're overwhelmingly pleased with what we're doing and how we're managing, you know, we will have a lot more going on in the next six to eight months with activity in this city that people will see is going to continue to produce revenue in the future. That's, it's.
Is the revenue going to keep up with?
That's part of, that's part of the, that's part of the challenge and, and the task that we give to our staff, so.
Frank?
Yes.
Estimated next year, 700,000 shortfall?
That was our forecast based upon the increase, absorbing the full increase of the sheriff's contract, which we're anticipating to increase from 7% to 8%. We were able to absorb about 6% of that in the existing contract this year, so we're not seeing that effect, but we don't think we're going to have that opportunity next year. And then our PERS rates, as we've discussed before, are going up on a five-year basis until they hit 21% in, I think, 2017, 18.
Well, we see it, our police department getting 7% increases and things like that hurts. All right, the second year, we're talking deficit of 1.2.
I believe it was.
Approximately 1.2.
1.2.
The year in and the year out.
So, you know, how do you anticipate, if we don't go for a tax increase, how do you anticipate that we're going to have to pay for this?
Well, we have two options underway, and one we're going to bring forward to you after the summer recess. And that is that we are going to be moving forward with a police services review to look at the type of crimes and the crimes we have here in La Quinta and compare it to the services that we're providing to mitigate those crimes to see if they're being done in the most cost-effective manner. My history here with the city is that we've looked at the police force and we've increased police services over the years, and that's the most costly piece in our budgets, over 13.5 million dollars this fiscal year out of a 32 million dollar budget. That being the case, one aspect is to have the discussion with the council and the community about, do we need as much police services as we have, other, other options, not saying we're going to form our own police force. That's, you know, my opinion on that, and it's not to do so, but other ways that we can reduce our police service costs or at least not have the increase that we're looking at.
So, services to a certain degree are going to suffer.
That is, that would be one option we would look at. A second option we would look at is then going to our reserves and using the reserves to plug any gap like we did two or three years ago.
So, basically, what we're attempting to do now is to build up our reserves. You can throw that out the window because it ain't going to happen.
If the tax would pass, yes, that would definitely help us in that vein.
Can I ask, as far as the projections are, we were just, you were just talking about, have you projected in what our increased cost in, in wages is going to be because of the prevailing wage situation?
We haven't done a full impact of that. Tim, I'm trying to rest for the number, was it about 100 to 150,000 dollars to 200,000 dollars a year on our service contracts?
For landscape work?
Yes, because just to say it.
That's all.
In a real synopsis, we have prevailing wage potential impact on our public works projects.
Yes.
Being the construction of infrastructure or the reconstruction of infrastructure such as the streets. And then there will be a prevailing wage impact on our landscape costs as it relates to median improvements or, excuse me, median landscape maintenance, park maintenance and that. And we're looking at a ballpark of 200,000 dollars a year of that impact as we know it today. One of the challenges that our contractors have is that they work in the Coachella Valley market and not in the coastal or urban markets, and so they're trying to figure out what all prevailing wage means in terms of.
Prevailing wage is, is.
To their workers. It's union wage, but then it even goes beyond union wage in some cases, yes. And from the standpoint of our public works contracts, a lot of our larger contracts are already at a prevailing wage scale because those contractors do pay union wages.
Well, not only that, we probably have either state or federal money involved, and when that kind of money is involved in a project, it has to pay prevailing wage.
Primarily federal money, state money up until the passage of SB 7, that was not the case.
Okay, thanks, Frank.
You're welcome.
Answers the question, but it's something that this council's going to have to live with next year if, if we don't go forward on this issue here. And it's something that, you know, we're back where we were a couple of years ago when we're not bringing the revenues in to meet the expenses and that, so. It's a tough decision and, a decision that we have to make in that. Nobody wants taxes and that's for sure, but.
You know what? That's correct. Nobody wants taxes. I just consider this participation.
Yeah.
So, let's not call taxes, let's call participation.
Participation, okay. All right, if, if we're all done, before we start getting to make a decision, I do have a request to speak. Bill, Kane? I know you're back there.
Yep.
Give us your name and address for the record, Bill.
Sure. William Gertz Kane, 52485, Avenida Rubio, La Quinta, California. I live up in the code. A couple of sides, you were asking the question about, what did you call it, grandfathering or something? Forgot what you called it. I think Measure J in Palm Springs has it at 25 years. I don't know, nine years, 25 years. I also don't think that the difference between a half a percent, a quarter percent or 1%. I think if you're going to do this, which it looks like there are three people here who are desperately wanting this, that you just go for the maximum because you're going to need it in the future so you don't want to have to come back. But you can't, you can't con them by saying, oh, well, we're going to keep it really minimal. We're going to keep it really small and tiny.
No, I, I agree with what you're saying.
You either go for the whole banana or you don't. Okay, so, I read the survey report. I had it emailed to me. And first, I would question the randomness of the people surveyed and the generalness of the questions. It's like asking someone if they support the troops, you know what the answer's going to be before you ask it. So, I think it's important that any information given to the public be transparent and provide options. That being said, I'm against a sales tax increase, a parcel tax increase or a utility tax increase. While I understand the city lost its piggy bank of redevelopment money, that cannot be an excuse for poorly made decisions and foresight. I see that it has become fashionable, a fashionable tool for cities to try and convince citizens that increasing the sales tax or top tax or any other tax scheme is the city's only way out from looming deficits or is needed for some camp, kind of capital improvement project like Measure J was in Palm Springs. But the way to ask for a tax increase or a bond measure is to first lay it out in detail what you're going to spend it on because without telling the public what you're going to do is like telling them, give us the money and trust us, and that's something that doesn't seem to be working very well, or you wouldn't be in this situation. It's like you know you've been spending, and I know you won't like this inappropriately, and you want our permission to continue. This sales tax increase would go into the general fund rather than a special fund and therefore could be used basically for anything the city council decides on. The sales tax money. The sales tax money would be available for any approved expenditure including restoration of budget cuts, salaries, and/or additional employee benefits. But if you were being transparent, you would probably, it would probably be, in telling the public, maintained for that money pit called the Silver Rock and the rising cost of police services. Since the purchase of Silver Rock and the development of the golf course, when has that project ever brought in significant income or lived up to its hype? Where is the $700,000 deficit coming from? Estimated to bulge to $3 million on this side and $10 million on this side by 2018. Well, considering that the police public safety accounts for approximately 32% of our budget, public works and Silver Rock account for another 28%, then I think you have your answer. If I'm not mistaken, the city has in its budget $4,149,000 for Silver Rock this year alone, plus another $13,235,000 for police services. These budget items cannot be sustained and raising the sales tax is not addressing the underlying problem. The electorate should not be asked to approve new taxes to fill the general fund. I would first look to cut the many items I found in the current budget that were questionable. If a tax increases are required, then a complete description of what that money will be used for should be provided to the public before a general election vote is taken. Approving new taxes is little more than handing a blank check to city officials with no plans for accountability. Maybe what you should be doing is asking the citizens to vote on whether they should continue to fund Silver Rock, especially given the fact that golf membership around the country is down and large golf retailers are laying employees off, not to mention the drought in California. Next thing you know, you'll be asking to spend money on wells to irrigate the greens and I would suspect that that would run into millions of dollars also. Selling off Silver Rock but keeping a small portion for a park would more than cover the next generation's and our generation's budget requirements and cover community projects that would truly enhance the city of La Quinta. I think, I also think that it's time to reevaluate the contract on police and public safety. And I'll just, I didn't have this, but listening to you folks, you increase the sales tax, might be necessary, but we have to have the information where that's money going to. But then we hand it off to the police department or Silver Rock and then five years from now, some other catastrophe comes up and you're coming back and saying, oh, we need more money because the prices keep going up. Now, you might say inflation is good for the economy, I don't like it. An ending transparency for the public is always better than a closed session meeting. Thank you. Any questions?
Just for maybe a little information.
Uh huh.
Silver Rock.
Yes.
The golf operations itself has been in the black for several years. But the overall, yes, it's sure, it's cost us, but the operation has been in the black. So, we've made money on that, just for your information. The second thing is, do you know that we have over 6,000 resident members of Silver Rock? People that own property here? I know you're anti, it sounds like you're anti-golf and anti-Silver Rock.
No.
But we purchased Silver Rock for two main purposes, to bring future revenue into our city and to provide public golf course for our citizens who cannot belong to the country.
And I remember the hype on that. We're going to have the Ritz Carlton, we're going to have all the shops, we're going to have this and that. And every year that went by, I saw more money being dropped into it by the city for something for the flooding or now we've got the situation for the canal. So, I'm just saying, I don't know that the citizens, if they really knew originally what the situation was. Now, granted, that was during the period that Terry says those were the best years and it was probably redevelopment money. So, it was piggy bank money, it wasn't our money, but it was the state's...
That's why we bought it.
But wait a minute, it exactly was our money. The redevelopment agency money was tax dollars that you paid and it went to the county unless the city had a redevelopment agency and then those property tax dollars were returned to the city.
Mm-hmm.
So, it was your money.
Well, okay.
Our money.
All right.
And it was invested here in the city of La Quinta.
And a lot of money.
Yeah.
A lot of money for the property, a lot of money for...
We were just getting our money back, is what we were doing.
Well, I'm just wondering whether, whether the, as you say, the last two years of being in the black are going to bring back that millions and millions of dollars that we spent.
Never do that.
But that's just, that's already water under the bridge. But what I do see is I do see, and it, believe me, it's not that I'm totally opposed because if, worst-case scenario, we raise the tax, we're not going to be any worse off than Los Angeles at 9%.
I don't like to compare us with Los Angeles.
Well, you may not, but I'm just saying tax-wise. I'm just saying that the information can't be just spin. It has to be legitimately presented to the public and three months is not going to be able to do it, period.
I don't disagree with what you're saying.
So, but I also have questions about our budget. When I looked at the budget and got a copy of that and went through it kind of line by line, I said, what are we spending this money on? Why are we spending this? Why are we spending this? Now, I can sit down maybe sometime with the financial director and maybe, or somebody, a city council member, and they can explain why we're spending $10,000 for the thermal airport for some air show over there or why we're spending $100,000 or $130,000 for, and you know how I feel about this, the La Quinta Art Festival, which has probably got millions in the bank. Why we're spending $450,000 on the senior center and $250,000 on recreation. I mean, there's imbalance going on and it should be addressed in a serious manner. That's all I'm saying.
So, you bring up a lot of good points and this is your perception of...
Having lived here for 17 years.
No, it's your perception of, we should sell Silver Rock. We actually can't do that because of the money that we use to purchase. So, it's, it has to be for public use. So, we couldn't sell it and we all knew that going in, right?
So, we're locked in to another $4 million next year and another $4 million next year.
Well, I don't know the answer to that, but there are certain things that you've brought up that we have a little bit more knowledge and background on. There are things we can do, there are things we can't do. And a lot of your suggestions are good and worthy, but I think it would be wonderful for you to sit down with our director of finance or any of us, make an appointment and I'd be glad to talk to you about some of the suggestions that you've made. So, we, I, what you're seeing and what we're able to do are not...
Well, again, in listening to the last hour and a half of the conversation here, I can kind of see where the divide is. The only point that I would make is this. The fact that I don't agree with you, Don, does not necessarily mean that the public that doesn't like me, who doesn't agree with you, is uneducated. Your job is to educate them. I made an effort to educate, at least in a limited way, this issue, which is very serious. But the fact that you look at the people who don't go by what you want are uneducated or aren't really a participant...
I didn't think anybody said that.
He did, he did. I listened, you can read it back. Well, they must be, yeah, if, they must be, they must be lacking education in the matter. So, I mean, I see where the divides are here, but I just think you really ought to seriously think about this issue because we can't be, the fact that we have an internet crisis and we're not getting sales tax for that. I mean, I ask myself, why does El Paso get Apple Store and we get Hobby Lobby?
Hey, I'm looking forward to Hobby Lobby.
Yeah. Well, I like Michael's. I don't, I don't like the issues behind it. On the same thing, I didn't like Fresh &amp; Easy because I went online and saw that there were lawsuits against them for selling bad meat.
But we can't stop private enterprise.
And I said, well, wait a minute, now you can say that you don't have control over what the landlords do, but you did have control over Chevy Cadillac dealership. So, there is an issue where you can step in and image-wise, you can get serious about what this image is. You lost Ralph's and now you're talking about Walmart's. There are people who say, oh, yeah, Walmart's grocery store, that's great. For me, the image is not great for La Quinta. And as an artist, I'm concerned about image.
But, but we aren't, I don't know that anybody has made overtures to move in over there. I have no idea.
Well, I'm just saying that the word out there is that there are some people who are thinking about a Walmart's grocery store in that shopping center and are just like enamored with it. And I'm just saying, I would rather see something a little bit more stylish.
Yeah, but...
And I talked to you before about this, three years ago. I asked you, why aren't we getting these good stores? And you said to me, well, we've tried, we've tried.
You should have seen me for four days up in Vegas talking to these businesses, trying to bring them in.
Something is wrong then, Don.
I helped bring in Red Lobster and Nordstrom's. But I talked to them like a Dutch uncle for two years to try and get them to come into La Quinta. They said, we want to be Central Valley, so they go into Palm Desert. So, Palm Desert can thank me for helping bring them in. But hey, I'm out there trying and if they can't see that La Quinta is the place to be, you know, I do whatever I can.
Well, maybe, maybe we need to look at our marketing department because you know that I've come to you and this council two or three times with some art ideas for the city and have been turned down and I thought that they were great ways to stimulate people coming into our city. Forget about the Apple Store and the, you know, the, you know, the, what do you call it, the garden kind of shops that you have on El Paso. I mean, that would be nice here, but I'm just saying that you have to have an image of La Quinta that is advancing, as you say, into the new times. And to me, Hobby Lobby or JCPenney's is not, is not doing it. Now, you may look at it and say, well, that's bringing tax dollars in. I look at it as what do we want the image of the city to be? And if you're competing with all these other cities here in the valley, wait till Indian Wells gets their act together and starts building their ritzy build-out of a shopping center across from the test garden.
That ain't going to happen.
Well, you say it's not going to happen and it probably won't because of the economy. But I'm just saying that if they were, we'd be like an extension of Indio instead of an extension of Indian Wells. Anyway, I've taken up my time, my five minutes, there are probably other people here.
We're getting a movie theater because of what Indian Wells did. Thank goodness.
But just think seriously about this move of trying to press it down the public's throat in three months. And if you're going to do that, at least allow the counter side to be able to do the same kind of marketing that you're going to do. That's all.
All right. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to say something?
Come on in.
Okay, all right, well, matters before the council.
Well, study session, we've got it.
Oh, that's right. About any other future...
We don't have a four out of five.
And they're asking for direction and my vote is still no, we need more time.
No, for me, we need more time.
Yes.
Well, it's with who, it's not going to go anywhere.
I understand that, but I still have a vote and my vote is to go for it.
Move forward.
Yeah, move forward. And just remember, when you try to educate me next year why you need it, I may not vote for it.
And the beauty is you have that very right.
That's true.
That's for sure. Okay, with that, let's see, we'll move on to mayor and councilmember's items. Anybody have anything?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Yep.
Okay, then with that, I'll request adjournment.
Move adjournment.
Move to second, please vote.
Where adjourn?
Here.
Yes.
I do. Yeah, I do.